All right, we'll call the recess meeting to order. James, just take right off from presentation and report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, next on the agenda, item number two. This is presentations and reports segment. This is for information. Item number 2A is recognition of employee service. This is for Kim Espinoza.
Hey, James, have you taken the roll call yet?
Yes, thank you. I'm appreciative of the members having us go through the roll call. Let's go ahead for the folks who are listening in at home. Make sure we do have a quorum. We'll start out with Mayor Owens here. Pro Tem Selby. All right, Commissioner Walker, we'll go through the roll call. We'll come back to you at the end. We understand your phone may be muted as you're dialing in today. Next up, Commissioner Collins.
Here.
Commissioner Boyland here. Commissioner Mann.
Here.
And Commissioner Burke.
Present.
We'll come back to Commissioner Walker. Commissioner Walker, you have access.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we've got you.
Hello. I don't, something needs to be done here. This is the second month, the second meeting in a row that I've had an issue dialing in. I've called every number on the list and I'm not being recognized as a panelist only, as an attendee. So someone needs to check that out, please.
Absolutely. Yeah, we have a facilitator. He's giving me the thumbs up. They will check, they will check that out. Mr. Mayor, you do have a, do you have a quorum? And I understood you wanted me to proceed with the next item on the agenda.
All right, we've got the roll call and everybody's here. Take off.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 2A, this is recognition of employee service. We'll like to say, as a, if I can make a few words in honor of our employee first. I am so pleased to recognize a valued colleague tonight as we celebrate 20 years of service by Kim Espinoza. Prior to her time with the town of Manio, Kim was employed in the private sector with jobs in the insurance industry and prior to that in home building. Luckily, the town was able to bring Kim over to the public sector where she has faithfully served the people of Manio for two decades. I've heard from so many residents who have praised Kim's friendly and professional approach to the job, and she is a great person to have as a coworker and colleague as well. I will now read from the plaque being given on behalf of the mayor and board of commissioners. Presented to Kim Espinoza in deep appreciation and heartfelt thanks for 20 years of dedicated and loyal service to the town of Manio. Kim, can you come on up?
Kim, congratulations. Kim, I don't know what you were doing before. The town is very lucky to get ahold of you, I'm gonna tell you.
Well, thank you very much.
Congratulations, for you, very special. Thank you.
Item number 2B on the agenda. This is introduction of new employee. I may make a few words first before we get to the swearing in here. It is my pleasure to introduce the latest hire here at the town of Manio. Jamie Carol McLeese Whitley started work today, and she is our new deputy town clerk and assistant to the town manager. Jamie is returning home to Manio where she graduated from Manio High School. Ms. Whitley has excellent experience in fields ranging from education to local government, including her most recent tenure as town clerk for the town of Stelma. Jamie earned her bachelor's degree from North Carolina Wesleyan with majors in political science, criminal justice, and sociology. Plus, she has extensive training through UNC Chapel Hill and its school of government. Because Ms. Whitley will be serving the board of commissioners and other boards and committees in her role as deputy town clerk, she will be sworn in tonight by town clerk Becky Breholtz. I yield the floor to the town clerk and soon-to-be deputy town clerk.
You ready? Okay. You want to take, you want to leave your mask on? So you can talk a bit clearer?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, you're fine. You're good. I'm far enough away. I state your name.
I, Jamie Carol McLeese Whitley.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of said state.
Of said state.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
With the Constitution.
With the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As deputy town clerk.
As deputy town clerk.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Jamie, this is Commissioner Collins. I'm sure your father is very proud of you, and we are very proud of you. Welcome to the town of Manio.
Thank you. Welcome.
All right, next up on the agenda, item number 2D. This is report on record of bids for 604 Sir Walter Raleigh Street. This property was sold as surplus property by the town of Manio. As part of that process, we had bids that came in by September 15th at 3:00. In this particular case, tonight, we're supposed to record, report the record of those bids to the board of commissioners, and then, at its October 7th meeting, the board can choose to award the bid to the highest bid, the highest responsible bidder. I can report from our record of bids. They were opened by me, witnessed by the town clerk. They ranged from, the base bid on this was to be, the minimum bid was to be $50,000. We received bids from $51,000 to $65,000, and that was the high bid, and all of the, and the bidders who submitted all, they provided the surety or check to, that was the 5% required to make sure they were serious and responsible. So we do have an apparent high bidder, and we will bring this back to the board of commissioners that it's October 7th.
Are you allowed to tell us who the bidder was?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. So the, the high bidder was Frank P. Heiner IV and Susan H. Heiner, and that was our, that was our high bidder. Yes, sir. All right.
Okay, I just wanted to know.
How many bids, how many, how many bids?
Yes, ma'am. We had two bids ranging from $51,000 to $65,000. And they both appeared to be responsible and responsive bidders.
How many bids can be?
Nope. It could have been any.
Four minimum.
Could have been any number, but we had to have at least one that was responsible.
Okay.
If there are any quest, if there are any questions, Mr. Mayor, I'll move on to item 2E. This is the report on parking space pavement marking feasibility issues. In this particular, in this example, the board of commissioners asked staff to provide some preliminary information on an issue that was brought up at the last public comment session, and that was on pavement markings, particularly in downtown for parking spaces. I'm going to go ahead, if it's all right. We'll provide some sample photos here, and of course, we have, I know we have folks calling in, so should anybody have interest in any of the photos or anything, we can certainly share it with them as appropriate.
All right, so in the two weeks since we were asked to do some preliminary information, this, this research goes in terms of that, past background, past contacts, and I've been involved in professional standards as well as conditions local or near to the area. We also received. We also received information from local engineers as well as information on costs and things, but when it comes to feasibility on something like this, there are multiple issues to consider. It's not just a matter of putting paint on the ground, it's determining how does it impact the community and how does it impact the people we serve. So some of the key feasibility issues that we'll be discussing here are timing, supply and availability of parking spaces, yield of those spaces, use restrictions, behavioral approaches that also may impact the yield or available spaces. We talked, also should talk about aesthetics as well as funding and community engagement on this particular issue. Timing comes in a couple of different forms. So here's an example. The picture on the left is a photo that was submitted as part of the public comment last, at the last meeting for the board of commissioners. In this case, there's an example of the area between the waterfront condos and Lost Colony where we have some on-street parking shown, which on the left. We've got a vehicle, a silver vehicle that, if it had parked properly, would have yielded an extra space at that particular location. Picture on the right is a picture that I took as, we were just going down, going downtown to look at this particular issue the day after Labor Day, that Tuesday, and this was in the early afternoon between 1:00 and 2:00 o'clock. Same area, waterfront condos, Lost Colony Brewery, and we have quite a few cars parking here. So that's good for the downtown. If we've got a lot of people in town, we've got a lot of merchants, got a lot of business, and we do see the cars, though, in this particular case, are quite tightly packed in here. Now, one of the things that we talked about by time of day as well as by season, some of the, the research that I had seen as well, in person, on the technical side as well as viewing it from prior jurisdictions and here, is that time of day and season can impact how people behave. For example, we had some other photos submitted to town after a public comment period to the planning and zoning board, and that showed some Budley Street spaces. And this, we have some photos that are taken, say, for example, if it's off-season, there is more space available. So if I see a street, I'm less likely to pull right up to the bumper of the car ahead of me, and if I see 20 to 40 feet there. However, if a person after person does that, then there are less, less spaces for the people who will come in, in the hours after. That, for example, works on the hours per day. So someone early in the day may see a lot of space available and not want to come pull up to the bumper of the car ahead of them, but by, by lunchtime, there is perhaps some wasted space. So seasonality, time of day, they can impact people's behavior on how they park, and these are just some examples, some examples here. Let's talk about timing in another dimension, timing of the decision discussion here. So the, on the left-hand side, we have a, we have a site plan here for the town common. This is the, this is the, you know, the phase one color site plan here. So we had a pre-bid meeting for this important project yesterday and had multiple contractors and other, other folks attending. So we believe that the town common will be, will have 60 parking spaces available to, to our community before the next tourist season. So the question may be raised, should we wait to see the impact of that, that additional supply of parking before we make a decision on additional striping of parking spaces? A public policy decision. We don't have to answer it on the spot. Again, I'm going to put questions out there for us, for the board to consider as public policy issues. On the right-hand side, here's another example of supply. So Rhode Island Festival Park, we understood that this, this, we've got parking spaces available to folks in the town, including some here for, specifically set aside for the town, and I love that walk right, right over the bridge there, so it's a short distance away. But we had feedback from the community where some, the signage had, was not useful, wasn't pointing, especially visitors to that side, they didn't know, they didn't know it was there. So, you know, three simple signs put up before the Royal Day, hats off to our town planner and our public works director for the day before Labor Day, being out there and getting those signs up. And we had anecdotal data coming back from multiple community members reached out by phone, email, et cetera, and myself included, having observed people now, more parking over there being used by tourists and visitors. So this is part of the supply and the availability. Is it underutilized? Is it utilized? Is it coming soon? Now, we talk about space yield. So what, when I say yield, it's you've got an available space, available area for parking, how many actual spaces to yield? So let's take the yield issue itself first. So there is this debate both in the engineering and planning communities about, okay, if you've got marked versus unmarked spaces, which gives you the most yield? So we'll talk about gross versus net. So in the case of just looking at it theoretically, if we mark out spaces that are large enough to accommodate our typical vehicle, there's, there's a common, common thought that that reduces the yield, the number of available spaces, because if you mark that distance, you may not be able to accommodate the size of a car. For example, my neighbor where I live now, the, my one neighbor, he has a four-door full-size pickup, but the other member of that household drives a Mini. We, we all know that a Mini is about half the size of a full-size pickup truck, so we can see that they may have different parking needs, but if you do the same 22-foot space, it may have, you know, may, may be a little bit too big for the Mini, but just right for the truck. Maybe it's the Goldilocks syndrome. This particular case, there is a thought that marking spaces can reduce the theoretical yield, but the question is about net yield. There are also some folks who argue that, well, as long as you're making it more efficient and people aren't parking, leaving big gaps, your net yield, especially in a, in a busy time or an off-time, that it could actually, the net yield by marking, it could give you more. The jury's out on this because it's oftentimes based on the community, its patterns, even its street network and design, where if you have, if you have a lot of alleys, if you have a lot of parking or driveway entrances, et cetera. So the jury's out on that, but again, it's a debate that continues. Other design considerations factor in on this. So space size is an example. I just gave the example of the Mini versus the truck, but space size in our ordinance, our on-street parking is supposed to be 22 feet long and eight feet wide for on-street parking space. The nationally-used manual and uniform traffic control devices, or MUTCD, would say, that's right, 22 feet is correct for on-street parking, except for an end space where a 20 feet would be enough as they pull in or pull out. So the size of this space is important. Now, some jurisdictions, if they've got segments of road that won't fit all those full-size spaces, but maybe a couple of compact spaces and a couple of full-size spaces, there are options out there. They may be non-standard, but we can certainly consider those to make, match what we've got in the community. Another factor is loading zones. So we've heard a little bit about loading zones. Obviously, we've got thriving businesses here, and they do have things, they do have deliveries coming in to keep their businesses running. You've got to have the supplies. Interestingly enough, what we'd observed in other jurisdictions, what I've observed in other jurisdictions was, for example, restaurants, many of the restaurants we had would get deliveries in the morning from larger trucks, and whereas a lot of our merchants, the merchants, the retail merchants often would get smaller trucks delivering things to them, but they would be during the course of the day, the UPS, the FedEx, those types of, or other types of courier services. So the loading zones that may be needed here, if we do loading zones, as was suggested by one of the commenters, that can take away from your yield, but also can make it more convenient. So we'll come back to loading zones in a second, but there are, the way we designed this could have a big impact on what our yield is. Another factor in terms of what we get out of, how many spaces we get is, would be use restrictions. So an example would be, you could have different restrictions for parking lots versus on-street parking, and that happens in a lot of jurisdictions. So for example, if you've got a parking lot, perhaps restricting the number of hours, we saw where there would be restrictions of, say, three hours in one of the studies that I saw in some of the jurisdictions, three hours was enough time for people to do some shopping or go get a bite to eat, or four-hour parking so they can make a half-day of it, whatever it might be. There's no, there's no magic answer, but limiting the number of hours then keeps people from just, you know, parking, they're using as their parking lot for days at a time. Some people use paid parking in parking lots, so they make it free on the street if you're willing to drive around, but paid in the parking lots. That's another option that's used by different jurisdictions to channel people to the type of parking people want to do. So if someone's, someone wants to drive around, find a space, they get it for free. A parking lot, very convenient, they may pay for it. Again, that's jurisdiction by jurisdiction. Another example of this kind of restriction is overnight only. So overnight only, though, for residents. So a resident would get a permit in order to park overnight, but we certainly wouldn't have, like, visitors coming in town and making our, our parking lots into their own personal campground. We certainly have suitable places for that in our area. Plenty of campgrounds here that are lovely, so we don't need our streets to turn into that. So, or our park, our new parking lot. So another example of a restriction that can help us to make sure we've got enough parking for our community as well as our visitors. Another type of restriction is restriction on deliveries by time and/or truck size. I'll go back to the example from when I mentioned about the, some, some trucks, the bigger 18-wheelers may come in in the morning if they're delivering to, say, restaurants or other types of businesses that have larger loads. I've seen one, two jurisdictions that restrict it by time. Those big trucks can only come in in the morning when there are less cars parked there to make it easier for them to maneuver in the downtown. They, so like an 18-wheeler would be an example of that, and by limiting it to, to the morning hours before things get opened up, you avoid more of those interactions of 18-wheelers with other vehicles. Of course, we know that many of the panel trucks used by UPS, FedEx, USPS, they're all over the place all the time. In this day and age of online purchasing, we see those trucks around several times a day. So that, but that's different from a big wheeler. And also behavioral approaches. So this, this, this particular issue even came back in the, the parking study that was done by the town of Manio in 2003. What was one of the examples brought up is that they saw examples, and I saw this in other jurisdictions, where business owners and their employees are parked right in front of the business, but then there weren't spaces for, for people to, to park, their, their own customers to come in. However, I've seen examples of business owners here in Manio. I know, I know two in particular who rent off-street parking spaces to make sure spaces are available for their customers or other customers nearby, but maybe even providing some incentives for folks to park away from, right in front of the businesses or shops, and get them to more remote parking, either in parking lots, by shuttle, by walking, whatever that incentive might look like. But there are different behavioral approaches. We're not the only ones in that situation. There are even some cute little campaigns, I don't particularly love it, called Kiss the Bumper. That was the one they tried in New York, for example, if they try and get close to the car, had you, they called it Kiss the Bumper to get, get close. Personally, I don't want my car dinged up by anybody, but it was a way to encourage people to get close to the car in front of them, and then people would make better, more efficient use of space. Again, another behavioral, a behavioral approach, but there are different ways to, to, to make spaces available. Of course, it's not just about the yield, it's also partly about aesthetics. One of the biggest issues that came up when I did this, this very project down in another small town waterfront historic community that had a mix of residential and commercial uses, the debate, a bigger part of the debate centered around aesthetic issues. So on the left-hand side, you see, for example, Queen Elizabeth Street in that same location that one of the commenters sent to us. An example on the right side, then, is to stripe it, using a design that, you know, traditional box. So do the striping, put the box design. In this particular example, you can make modifications of it that are less impactful. For example, you could do, like a, you could put little Ts or crosses at the corners, or you could just do lines instead of the full box out. This is maybe less intrusive, but nonetheless, any kind of striping, either one road or throughout downtown or beyond, well, it does have an aesthetic impact. And that was, going back to my prior experience, we had a major faction that was, in fact, one of my council members said, well, this looks like a runway, quote, I see in the newspaper articles. I had other people saying, well, you've just designed an urban environment. We're a, we're an historical, we're a quaint town. We're not an urban area, and what you're creating here in the, in your, in your built environment is this visual runway, this visual, you know, all these lines everywhere. So I think aesthetic issues are often, and it's hard to think of an engineer, engineering type talking about aesthetic issues, but we want to be sensitive of what the community desires are, what they want to visualize for their community. Of course, it's not just aesthetics, we have funding. This is, this is not the kind of project you just go out with paint and marked, marked lines on the ground. We have to do it right so that we don't assume liability. We do it in, in compliance with, with the applicable laws. We also do it in a way it's designed, it's designed so that we don't create conflicts that create liability for the town. So in working with a local engineer, we're trying to get some, get some cost estimates. So taking a sample project area of basically downtown plus Sir Walter Raleigh, both east and west of Highway 64, those are areas that are potentially eligible for, they have on-street parking, and we, so we obviously focus on those. So for the design and the related services, about $5,000 to $10,000 for this project. The striping installation would vary enormously, and when I say, we put up here $23,000 to $25,000. Let me say how that might go up or down. So this implied that we would just do that line design, right? We wouldn't do that full box, just, we'd just do lines like this, not the full box. Okay? But we also know if we did the full box, it would triple the cost then, because there's just more striping to go down. Also, we looked at thermoplastic. Thermoplastic's the type of striping you do that lasts a long time. If you use paint, it doesn't last as long, it's harder to see when it's wet, when it's wet out or raining or things like that, and then the cost would come down if we did paint. So, but meeting in the middle, that budget is right in the middle of those two items. Of course, we don't have a cost on future maintenance, because we've never done it here, but over time, if, if there's something the board wanted to pursue, we could get to that level of detail. Now, I mentioned community engagement. So we did have recent public comments. We had a local resident appear, came before the board at the last meeting, and we had a local, or we had a local property owner who appeared before Planning and Zoning Board back in June, and then subsequently sent an email and photos to the board of commissioners. So we've had two comments here in the last, in recent times. I know our town clerk looked at the records there, although parking comes up often, often, and over the last, over the last decades even, the actual parking, the striping for pavement markings, it hasn't been as common, but with two comments here recently, it's worth looking at. I don't know if that means a groundswell of support for it or, you know, community outcry, but better to have the discussion now and start the process. Public input, if this is a key action that will change the look of the town, I really recommend input on this. This isn't the kind of thing, staff just goes and puts lines on the ground. I mean, this is, it really would change the look, so I think public input's important. The question in my mind, is that a standalone community conversation, a single issue? If it's, if it's urgent in health, safety, and welfare, well, maybe that, maybe that's the approach. But sometimes taking a holistic approach and talking about it in the greater context is better, so embedding it into the comprehensive plan and the work, the 20-year-plan working group is working on things, that all that feeds into the comp plan, is that conversation we need to have in the comp plan instead to take that holistic approach? Again, it's the question, not making a determination either way, just making sure we're hearing, hearing these questions. And last but not least, of course, funding priorities. We do listen to the community as, as, you know, as the board appropriates the funds for different projects throughout the community, and is this, is this the kind of funding priority that the board believes should rise to the top? I know we had a very tight budget in this COVID year, and this, and, you know, hard choices had to be made, but of course, priorities are important, and that's something, that's a factor that should be considered. So these are some of the, some of the questions, is, as the board thinks about its public policy options here. We wanted to give you information on a range of things, not just can it be done, but leads, leads down to that path of, is this something you want to continue the conversation with? I will say, we do anticipate, at the October meeting, we were expected to come back to the board with an update on the budget. We'll have budget amendment number one, we'll have updates to some of the projects and costs and available funding, as, as we had discussed. So this topic doesn't need to be answered today, but if that's the kind of, if that's, if this is something we want to put in that budget update in terms of consideration for funding priorities, we can certainly include that in the October 7th discussion, should the board decide to move forward with this suggestion. And that's all I've got, that's all I've got for this, and if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Does anybody have any questions, James, or discussion, or? We certainly can't rush into this, I wouldn't think, because this is going to be pretty heavy. We're, you say we're listening to people. I haven't seen but one or two or three come before the board. That ain't, that ain't near the majority of many of them, and I don't know how to feel much, quite open. I, I personally, myself, as the mayor, I don't want to rush into this. I'm not saying I'm against it, but every town in eastern North Carolina would love to have our problem, and you know what it is? A parking problem. There's not a town in eastern North Carolina that's making, all of them are closing up. We've, we've got a tourist industry here we've got to look out for, that they don't know a parking line from a non-parking line. I mean, I'm just saying, a lot of thought's going to have to go in this, in my opinion. Now, if the board wants to do it tonight, I'm satisfied with it, but I just personally want to take our time on this one. But, Jason?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I agree with you completely in the fact that I'm wide open, you know, it's, I haven't seen a huge outcry one way or another, and, and so for now, it's, it's, we haven't seen enough to say that this is something that's definitely beneficial or definitely hurtful. And I know $35,000 may not be a, a huge amount in the scheme of things, but I mean, that's I'm not saying I'm against it, but every town in eastern North Carolina would love to have our problem, and you know what it is? A parking problem. There's not a town in eastern North Carolina that's making, "All of them are closing up." We've, we've got a tourist industry here we've got to look out for, that they don't know a parking line from a non-parking line. I mean, I'm just saying it, a lot of thought's going to have to go into this, in my opinion. Now, if the board wants to do it tonight, I'm satisfied with it, but I, I just personally want to take our time on this one, but, Jason?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I agree with you completely in the fact that I'm wide open, you know, it's, I haven't seen a huge outcry one way or another, and, and so for now, it's, it's, we haven't seen enough to say that this is something that's definitely beneficial or definitely hurtful. And I know $35,000 may not be a, a huge amount in the scheme of things, but I mean, that's a significant amount of taxpayer money that can be used elsewhere, so, yeah, I mean, it's a, my, my one question though, and you started to touch on it at the end there, was regardless of anything we do, would this be something that's addressed in the comprehensive plan that we have to do next year anyway? So, it's, I mean, I, you hate to punt on things, but, but I mean, just kick the can down the road, but it's, if we're going to have to talk about that next year, then what's the point of, I mean, if it's something where it's kind of in the middle of splitting hairs on what we do, then, then why spend a lot of time or energy on it now?
Rich, is it, is it whole conversation?
Yes, I guess that's the same question I had.
We're just talking now.
Yeah, do we do it before the parking lot or do it after the parking lot to see and do a study, how much the parking lot affects that area down there? The parking lot be finished, slated for the end of, before the season, correct?
Yeah, February.
Yep. Yes, it will be done before the season, yes, sir.
Are you calling the parking lot, the Town Common? Richie?
I'm sorry.
This is Christine. Are you calling the parking lot, the Town Common, you mean?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, the Town Commons.
Okay. Yeah, I agree it's probably best, you know, to wait, you know, because again, it's probably not our top priority, and our needs could change based on how the Town Common is utilized. But, you know, it, it definitely is something that we don't want to get too out of hand. I know that, you know, some people say it, it's a nice problem to have, but, you know, I don't know. We, we don't need what happened to have happened again with the woman that parked, you know, in the illegals, you know, in a, in a, by a hydrant and got the traffic backed up and all that. We, you know, if there's any way we can, you know, any of those ideas that James presented that we can take advantage of to maybe, you know, like I've always said, it needs to be smarter, we need to have smarter parking, not necessarily more parking, and that's just how I look at it. It just needs to be, you know, either laid out or designated, it just needs to be a smarter plan in general. That, that's all I have to say.
Dale?
Well, I, I like the idea of the three-hour parking on the street. We used to have that before, and some of the, the business people came up to us, complained about it, and we, we took that restriction off, but we had planned for a later date to review that. So, I think three-hour parking on the street would, might solve some of the problem.
Yeah?
I think we should wait to see till the parking, the Town Common is done, and that's going to alleviate, we know, six parking spaces. And also, I just think we should wait on that. As far as the time limit on parking, I'm not a fan of that, because we want people to stay in Manio as long as they, you know, as long as they want. And the business owners, of course, would love that too, instead of making a three-hour destination, let's just make it all day. So, I think we should wait till the Town Common.
I think whatever we do, I think we need to consult with DOT. I'm trying, if memory serves me right, 15, 20 years ago, the town put some lines in the street, that, then they had to pay to get removed, so I don't want to spend money and then pay money to get it taken up, so I think we need to consult with DOT, whatever direction we take.
Yeah, I think you've heard from the board, you've got a little bit of feeling, not even, we're not even nearing where, and we don't need to be, but take our time and gradually ease into it. I've heard some good discussions about the, wait, let's wait until the park or Town Common is finished, and it'll be, it'll be, it'll be finished for next season. We're not going to have a serious parking problem. I wish we would. I'm, I'm a little different than some people. I, I know what makes this town go around, it's the tourist dollar. People come in here to park, and you see them, the whole families, and you give them an hour, two hours to park, and they have to move their car. Well, how are they going to go to all the shops and tourist attractions and a little bit of everything and take insight for the town, say, two hours? I, I don't know. We've got a lot of thinking to do, that's my thing. And I'm, I'm, well, I don't, I don't care.
Do we need to put any money for a study? Or can, or can we do that at a later date?
Yes, sir. The, so the preliminary study on this was expected to be, of that $5,000 to $10,000, it was half, it was a little bit over half of that amount. The remaining half of that amount would have been for actual administration, or actually working on, doing the, doing the construction documents, the, the, all that stuff, so. But I, I think this is fantastic, fantastic feedback, and obviously, boards hearing voices that are, that are put out there, we will, we will be very happy to continue the research, including the comments about trying to hit some of those trouble spots, talking to DOT, and, you know, leaving any problem we can now, but still do the research so the all can continue to be informed on this issue.
One more thing, so are you spending money for the study of parking?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. That would have, that would have been included in that thing, and right now, that wasn't something we had in our budget.
Okay, then I'm like, five months from that, from October to February, the season coming to an end, I, I don't, I'm glad we're not spending money on that.
All right, let's move on.
Yes, sir.
James, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number three on the agenda is public comment. This is for information. Members of the public are invited to address the Board of Commissioners on any topic. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions or to take any action on items brought up during the public comment period. Speakers will address all the comments to the board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please identify yourself and location so that your statements can be reported. Mr. Mayor, if it's all right, I'll look up on the screen, and I'll let our, let our listeners know if they would like to, if they'd like to make a public comment, I will, we will ask them to hit star nine on their phones, and we'll work our way through public comment.
Good, go ahead.
So, we're looking at the screen, and we have several callers on the screen. If any of those callers would like to make a public comment, please hit star nine on your phone. It will raise your hand, and will identify you so that you can, you can make your comment and have your voice heard. Any callers, if you want to hit, if you want to join in, hit star nine? All right, and do we have any other public comments?
Can I even wear my mask? You was able to talk with your mask on?
This thing is nice and season.
You was able to talk with your mask on?
I'm Todd Clissold, lived at 221 Compton Street. I wasn't going to speak, actually, but I was just going to bring up what I thought about the parking. As a business owner downtown, I see it every day. I know Bobby, you drive around, Betty, I mean, most of everybody drives around downtown. And can you bring up that one slide that had the car parked, the kind of, in the circle? Because I think if you just, like, right here, here, this is one that they all, and it happens to, like, this is, this is downtown, and that is the beginning, but if you park another foot, it takes up two spaces. And up in front, this is for introductory, right in front of this space, it's the same way. You can get either one or two cars in between, I mean, after that intersection space. So, what I guess I'm saying is, I don't think you need to hope to get the town. I think if you can do like the desk project, and do Queen Elizabeth, and then maybe try Sir Walter Raleigh, and just see how it does, and if it, when I do the paint, and if the paint lasts about two years, then, and it works great, and the paint comes off, then it doesn't work, then, you know, that would be my input, because it is, you just have people that, you know, losing, you lose the spaces just within this distance here. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
I'm Al Ferri from Manio, and I'd like to first start off, Kim's already left. Kim exemplifies who we are as a town. She is the first person you come in contact, and she might treat you all a little different, a little bit more fuzzy, but she even treats me fuzzy. And, and she is absolutely a great choice to recognize for 20 years, but also as an outstanding employee. Second thing, say something about your website. I can go back you to the agenda and get the website, so I don't have to call you anymore. What a great improvement that has been for people that are non-technical. But the reason I came to represent five, a, a group of people, which gives me five minutes, is to support the mayor's comments that I saw in the paper, and that's in housing. I've been dealing with staff since the 1st of June, and have had wonderful conversations and great input and insight by the staff on a development project our family would like to talk to the town about concerning year-round housing. And I wanted you all to know about it, because I saw it in the paper. The mayor said this is important. We are the group that signs the front of the check and the bottom of the deed of trust. So, we're, when I say we, I'm talking about my family, we're willing to do that. We have the land, we have the desire to address year-round housing, we recognize the need for our community. The property we're talking about is on Bowser Town Road on the north side, west of the EMT Station. So, I don't know if everybody's got that location or not.
Is there a sign on there?
No, I took sign down. Took sign down, and I don't know, we can get maybe 16 units or so in there, and, and it would be for year-round housing. So, to support the mayor and his initiative, which I hope has an interest of, of y'all to address housing, I would like to offer the opportunity to work with the town, continue to work with the town staff, and get input from the commissioners and the mayor on what type of project you would look, want to look at. What I'm talking about are rentals, is what I'm talking about. And what I'm talking about is one- and two-bedroom rentals, small rentals, like Sam Moore, you know how Sam has? That's a good-looking little project there, not that small maybe, but that's what I'm talking about. So, in full transparency, that's what we're talking about doing. So, as you all discuss this as a town issue, if, please include us if you'd like to, as a willing partner to help address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Malcolm.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Malcolm. Malcolm, I'd like, and I know you agree with me, it's not my initiative, but what his initiative, I, I'm hoping it's this whole town board's initiative, because together we can get things done, separate we'll never get it done. And I, I think from hearing the board have talked in the past about, they're changing the name of it, I haven't understood it yet. I still say affordable housing, and I'm not grammatically correct. It's another name for it now, but still, it's affordable housing to me at my age, but I, I really think, just as I, as I said, this whole board, I'm hoping will grab hold of this project and go with it, and all of us be one, because it would really be a feather in Manio's cap, in our cap, and everybody's been talking affordable housing in Dare County as long as I can remember, and still, nothing is being done, and we can, we have to worry with all, we can take the initiative, along with people like you and your family and maybe others, but, gosh, if we could get 16 homes or 16 rental units that people can really afford, that would be great. That's all I'm going to say, but I, I want to crack, I hope this board, we're all together.
I hope so, too.
Yeah.
I'm all for it. I think it needs to be done. I've talked to the county. The county, I don't know if they're on board or not. I know they say they are, but they act and speak differently.
Yes, Mayor Potem, we can, we've continued to be in touch with, with county staff, and they are continuing with their, with their study with UNC Chapel Hill. But I also understand there, there are a number of different approaches here, and, and I, and I believe this is going to be a topic on the agenda for, for just discussion, public policy discussion at the next meeting, so we'll make sure we got more information from the county at that time. Mr. Mayor, we didn't have anybody else that I saw on the screen, so.
All right, is there anybody else that'd like to be heard? One more time. Okay. All right, we'll close public comment period. Go ahead, James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number four on the agenda, this is old business, it is for action. This item is the annexation of town-owned property at Zero Sir Walter Raleigh Street. I know Zero is a funny address, it's, it's vacant property, it's undeveloped, it's directly across from the Pea Island Cookhouse Museum. Now, at the August 5th meeting of the Board of Commissioners, they adopted the resolution allowing us to annex this property in accordance with the North Carolina general statutes. Now, the public hearing was heard on September 2nd. No comments were received during the public hearing then, and in accordance with the new North Carolina law, the board allowed written comments up to 24 hours afterwards. However, I can confirm that no written comments were received on this matter. So, in order to complete the annexation process, the Board of Commissioners would need to adopt ordinance number 37 to extend the corporate limits to the Town of Manio to include the town-owned property located at Zero Sir Walter Raleigh Street.
All right. Is a motion in order?
Yes, sir.
All right.
This is Dale, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 37 to extend the corporate limits to the Town of Manio.
All right, you've heard Dale on his motion, is there a second?
I'll second. Yep.
Second by Jason, all right. Is there any discussion? All right, roll call.
Yes, sir.
All right, roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will go to the roll call for the, for the motion as stated. Mayor Potem Stelby, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, Iron A.
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke, Iron A.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, you have a unanimous vote for the motion.
All right, the motion passes, we now officially own the town-owned property that we already own. All right, Mayor, Commissioner comments? I don't have any comments. Christine, comments?
Yes, yes, sir. Um, I just, I've had a couple people ask me, and it seems kind of silly to even ask, but I know Halloween is coming up, and traditionally, the town is, you know, hot spot for that kind of thing. I didn't know if the, you know, if the town has been approached by any of the, you know, traditional people that put on the Halloween festivities or not.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, yes, sir. Yes, Commissioner Walker, I can confirm that the Town of Manio has not received the traditional special events permits from the two churches that have been doing the events in the past. I have, I don't, I don't know if there's a fact, but I presume it's because of the continued crowd gathering restrictions in North Carolina.
Okay, so, so that is, that's where, I mean, we're, we're standing firm with that right now unless anything changes. I can, just, just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
Okay. Dale? Okay, Darrell?
This is for the town manager. Any word about this, how the assessment of the Mars' Light Fork Walk coming along?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Commissioner Collins, so the boardwalk assessment, we, the, the fieldwork on that was done, the bulk of it was done just yesterday, and we expect to have the report in time for the next board meeting, so we would expect that to be an agenda item for the board to consider.
Okay. This is just for information, the Three Island Preservation Society received a, almost a $14,000 grant from the Outer Banks Foundation to develop and implement some curriculum-based online programs for Dare County schools. So, we're working on seven curriculum-based modules that we will present online to schools about the history of Dare County, dating back to the English arrival of the New World, to the pre-colony, as well as the history of Pea Island and Pea Island lifesavers. That's all I got.
Betty?
Um, I don't have anything.
Richie?
Oh, yes, this is for the manager, is green engineering finished with their scope or they're working it?
The engineering contract?
Yes.
Is, is that for the, you're talking about the shallow bag base sewer pump station project?
Yes, you know, those ride-arounds they would do.
Yes, sir. As the board approved it last time, we did, the negotiations were successful, and we have entered into a contract for the shallow bags sewer pump station project. That's a big project. We know as we start getting designs going, it's such an open area, we want to make sure to engage the board as well as the community on that, on that very visible project.
All right, thank you. That's it.
Jason?
Yeah, I mean, appreciate everyone's feedback on both tonight, as well as what's been given in before, regardless of where the, the parking stuff stands. I mean, it's, it's, it's something that stresses people out, so it's a good thing that people are thinking of ways to make it better, whether it's something that we actually implement or not. And then, you know, so that's a constant reminder of what a good, you know, our, our community is like, and Malcolm, I hope we can make something work there. There's a lot of talking about problems, and we should do something, and hopefully we can, and it looks like maybe we've got a, a clear path to actually do something, and, and hopefully we'll, we'll see that.
Okay. Eddie?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd love to see the town move forward, whether without any other entities to, to, about some affordable housing. I thank you for bringing that up. I think it's important that there are options for people that need affordable housing. It may not necessarily be homeownership, it may be rental until they can establish homeownership, so I, I think it's a great idea that we look at rentals as well as in the bigger picture after that project, maybe look at some, some homeownership projects. Excited that you're, you and your family are willing to work with the town.
Yeah, that's good. And I think James and Melissa have their work cut out for us, formal this is affordable housing, because I'm, I'm just one person here, and the mayor, don't know how, know how much longer I'll be here, but I think we really need to grab hold of this thing, because it's easy to grab hold of, probably hard, hard to turn loose of, but there is financing available, there's workability available through Malcolm and his family, there's other groups that's interested. The county, I think, is still interested, but they've joined in with Institute of Government, and I ain't got to tell you about the Institute of Government, it'll take a year for them to come up with a decision. But we ought not forget the county, the county, because like Eddie said, there's probably other entities we could work with Malcolm, and at the same time, be working with the county, at the tail end of the county, of course, but the county's going to need us. So, here's a viable source out here that could get it going, I guess, if we work with it. But that's, that's, that's all I got to say, and I think some excellent comments tonight, and no objections, any other comments? We will, now, somebody's got to help me out, we'll adjourn until when?
Yes, the next, yes, Mr. Mayor, the next, the next meeting is October 7th at 6:30 PM.
Okay. All right, we stand adjourned.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to the second added motion, we adjourn. Motion by Betty, the motion by Eddie, we adjourn. All, roll call?
Yes, sir, for the adjournment. Mayor Potem Selby, Iron A.
Nah, they for one, I'm just.
Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
Commissioner Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Borland?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann?
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, you have a unanimous vote.
All right, we stand adjourned.